Is getting them ready to enter kindergarten. And so every time that child would bite, we'd bring that iPad up, you know, so you could see. No biting, but we can't send them home indefinitely. It's our responsibility to work with them and get them ready for kindergarten. It removes redundant requirements and again from part day to full day. And then they want us to do more monitoring on attendance and absenteeism. And I think that's something that the school system is working on as well. Every if a child misses three days of school, we find out what's going on. We send our family advocates out to that home. We make phone calls and we find out what's happening. Why isn't this child in school? And then we if we're not satisfied, then we have protocol in place that we have to follow. And then it allows for more flexibility. And you'll have some more information about all of this again in your board packets. If you you can go ahead and go to the next to the next one. There's some training that will be going on across the state and across the nation. It's already actually started at some of the conferences that will occur in December. But specifically in North Carolina, we will start training in January. Also, my managers have been gathering every third Wednesday in this room from about 2:00 until 3:30. And we're looking at webinars that are being offered by the administration for children and families. And then there's new guidance that comes out every week about the new standards. And then in January, I should have more information for you that will go in your board packets. Okay, I believe that's it. What questions, if any?
The grant that we just re-submitted for the extended day, do you know when that will be approved?
I do not know.
Or awarded?
I'm not sure when it will be awarded, but I do know that my program specialist talked to me about three weeks ago. And she said she uploaded everything that we asked for into the HSES system. But I I'm going to say probably sometime in the spring, we should know something about it. But I don't have an award date.
Okay. All right. Well, no, you'll keep us up to date on that because that would certainly go a long way to helping to meet that goal.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffner.
Yes.
The birthday girl next Thursday.
This this coming Thursday. And for my present, I have the day off the next day. It's Veterans Day.
There you go. All right. The superintendent's report.
Thank you. You have two documents attached to my part of the agenda. One is this report that I'm getting ready to review with you. The other will be the criteria for the extracurricular activities for students at the Student Success Center. The North Carolina School Board Association Conference for Board Member Development is next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in Greensboro. I have to attend a superintendent's meeting at 1:00 on Tuesday afternoon. And I'll be leaving the office Tuesday morning, but I really look forward to spending time with board members at this conference. The next the date for the next quarterly meeting with the chair and vice chair of the Board of Commissioners has been rescheduled. The new date is Monday, November 28th, beginning at 5:30, and we will hold that meeting in this room. Sports Hall of Fame tickets are being sold for $30 each. This event is scheduled for Monday, November 21st, beginning at 6:00 at McLendon's Restaurant. Tickets can be purchased at a variety of locations, including the Board of Education. Renee Mead is going to help me next. We have two billboards promoting the school system, and they're going to be put up later this week. Renee designed both billboards, and I would like for her to show you a preview of those billboards at this time. One will be on the eastern side of the county and one on the western side. So Renee, would you explain which ones going where?
On the top side of the G C, the top billboard, that's for the western side. And if you you are here from school, you might notice that the students in the top left-hand corner are the west students. One has moved to the high school. And then of course, that's graduation. I'm sorry, I did step up just a little bit. We have Whittemore, and then Ellen Gale, and that's all represented on that on that billboard. And that location, how about 127 North, North on Green Camp Road? It's going to be on the left side, north facing. So if you can translate that. I'm not sure I'll just online see it. And those are supposed to go up this week.
Okay, great.
And you can't really see very well on that map because one, if you do just on a little bit. That's the first location. And then if it's called back. The second one is number five. And the reason that I selected those two locations, first was they were available. And those were the two that had the highest weekly conversions. So according to where you get the same blah blah. And then if you look back at the screen, you'll see the eastern billboard and. You'll see the two students in the corner. Those are east students. And down across the bottom, we've got Sugarloaf, Strongpoint, and then just graduate.
I would like to say that Brushy Mountain Golf Course, they actually did a fundraiser. And we're using the money, the proceeds from that fundraiser to pay for both of these billboards. And you can't see it on this copy very well, but we give credit at the bottom for for their sponsorship. Any questions about the billboards?
These will stay up how long?
How long will they stay up? I think until the board is rented is how it is how it works.
For a month, and we tell you why you don't get the board.
Because we had the one out of 90 stay up several months. And that was just because nobody else had rented the board. So it will stay up at least a month, but then longer if nobody wants to rent it. So I hope that nobody wants to rent it. But again, we're just promoting graduation and all the great things that we are doing in this public school system. Tomorrow is our first Required Professional Development Day. It is a vacation day for students. The focus of the day will be writing and how our students can and should be writing in different formats across the curriculums. We will meet in the auditorium in the morning at 8:00, and the training sessions will conclude at 11:30. Teachers will spend the remainder of the day in their classrooms. Friday is a holiday for students and staff in honor of Veterans Day. I hope everyone in Alexander County will take the time to thank a veteran this week. Dr. Curry, as you saw earlier tonight, is involved in a program on Friday at the auditorium. And I just appreciate the work she does with the Veterans Committee. A work session for this board has been scheduled for Thursday, December 8th, beginning at 5:00. Please mark your calendar and make plans to attend that work session. And lastly, I have updated a document. That's the second document that I referenced. This document pertains to students at the Student Success Center and their eligibility for extracurricular athletics. We currently have one student at the Student Success Center that meets the criteria that are listed and plans to take part on the high school's wrestling team. These guidelines were developed by a team from the Student Success Center and the high school. And it will be a great step for students transitioning back to the regular school setting. You can review those if you have any questions, please direct those to me. Any questions at this time?
Do we have an update on the DPI study?
It was conducted. It was concluded on the 25th and 26th. And again, it will take about a month to compile that data and get a report and recommendation back to the board. So we're looking for that early December. I hope that we have it for our work session on December 8th.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a time frame for the appraisal?
I was contacted by the person doing that, and he asked a question if we wanted the one and a half acre addition to the property included. And I talked with Chairwoman Brixie, and we're going to separate that out. But the building will be appraised and the property that it sits on. And then the one and a half acre that adjoins that will be appraised separately. But I don't have I don't have the time frame yet.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, unfinished business there. I would recognize Sharon Haffey. We have a the section, the 1,000 section looks like of the policies and school volunteer policy that's up for the second reading.
Yes, the second reading tonight are the the 1,000 section policies that were up for review. Board authority and duties, governing principles, parent involvement, Title I parent family engagement, school safety, discrimination, harassment, and bullying complaint procedures, and a prohibition against retaliation. I only had one question, and it was on the policy of school safety. And Bill addressed that in his presentation tonight. So if there are no no questions, I'd ask for approval on second reading.
This is on for the second reading. What's the pleasure of the board?
Hope to approve. Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving those particular policy revisions, please say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. And it's right there, and we'll move on to new business with yet another set of proposed policy revisions. It's basically the 2,000 series. And it looks like a field trip and excursions, policy 3320.
The 2,000 section of Board Operations, and then we have do have the policy on school field trips. Policy 2010 adds a requirement for notice to the board when the superintendent makes certain communications related to legislation, policy, or political issues. The Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and it simply at once again adds the Luiando Leandro phrase in this policy. It also reduces the training hours from 12 hours every year to 12 hours every two years. Board member conflict of interest, it limits the acceptance of gifts or favors from vendors. So you can't have anything more than a coffee cup.
They've never offered that.
Board member opportunities for development, that again reflects the reduction of the training hours. Board member compensation and expense expenses. And this revises the policy to provide additional detail and best practices for reimbursement of board member expenses. Official school spokesman, again, it's related to policy 2010 that establishes the expectations of the board for employees who are asked to commit comment on legislation, policy, or political issues. Board meetings, it's substantial, policy 2300. It substantially revises the policy to clarify the three different types of board meetings. Public participation in at board. Public participation in, at board meeting, Policy 2310, and that clarifies the requirement for a vote of the board if something is added to the agenda. Uh, compliance with the Open Meetings Law, 2320, adds optional, um, information regarding the use of an audio or audiovisual recording as minutes of the meeting. Uh, Policy 2341 clarifies the definition of a quorum. Uh, 2400, uh, board policy makes all policy decisions, again, with the Leandro statement. Uh, then, the school fifth, field trips and excursions policy. The person, Mr. Gregory Smith, uh, from Eastern Transportation Consultants, who does the inspections of the charter bus companies, sent us an email and wanted to, um, alert us about field trips that happen overnight, that there is a greater, uh, likelihood of accidents between 1:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. And he also wanted, uh, that, the, us to revise the policy and state the number of hours that a driver can drive. It's a maximum of 10 hours, or has been on duty a maximum of 15 hours. He must, uh, be relieved for, or off duty for eight hours. If you have any questions or need clarification, um, if you'll let me know, I'll be happy to answer those questions and bring the policies back for the second reading next month.
What's the pleasure of the board on these policies that we're talking about under New Business, Section 5? Would you like to bring them back for a second reading?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. All right, we will bring those back in December.
Thank you.
Sharon.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I recognize Dr. Curry, um, school improvement plans and the comprehensive assessment needs. I appreciate receiving these early, um, earlier than our regular board packet. There were, there was a lot of information, so thank you for that, Dr. Hickner and Dr. Curry. And I just want to let the board members know that we do need to take action to approve these. Take, take action. Whether we approve or not would be up to the board, but we need to take action.
Thank you, Chairman Bricksey, Dr. Mahaffey, members of the board. The 2016-2017 Comprehensive Needs Assessments and Revisions to School Improvement Plans are being presented to you this evening for your approval. Um, I know that it probably took every bit of two weekends to read this. I don't think people tell you that when you become a board member, do they?
Yeah.
As you remember, we provided the District Comprehensive Needs Assessment in progress on our strategic plan in the August meeting. The district's, we're all getting tired, I think. The district's strategic plan was further reviewed and minor revisions were made. Each school is required by legislation to post the school improvement plans, the school improvement team members, and the dates and times of meetings on their webpage. So I ask for your approval. They have already been voted on and adopted by the schools, and it's just pending your approval.
Hope to approve as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I want to commend the schools for all the hard work that obviously went into these. If it took me as long to read them as it did, I cannot imagine how much work went into creating them.
Yes. The good thing is, is they are a three-year plan, and with, um, good revisions every year and looking at the needs assessment, they'll just have to do minor revisions as we move forward, unless there's a huge change coming down from the state.
Agreed.
Some leadership team drafted each one of these. When you went out to the individual school with an improvement plan, you came back, drafted this. They always...
What we did was, we did the district's strategic plan, and then they took those areas and they looked at their own data sources, and then they, they developed a school improvement plan that was aligned to ours. And a lot of that includes major state initiatives and things that our Strategic Planning Committee here in the district thought were important. Any other questions?
Anything else?
I have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of approving the, the plans as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Mahaffey, the 2016-2017 Alexander County Schools Budget.
The 2016-17 proposed budget is $47,629,11. And that is within a couple hundred thousand dollars of the budget total for last year. Some of the things that influenced the budget this year were the salary and personnel increases given, given by the state. There was a step increase for teachers, uh, and the step ranged from 2.1% to 13.1%, and the average was 4.7%. Assistant principals and principals received a step increase of 1.5% and a half a percent bonus. Um, there was also provision in the law this year that a teacher who becomes a principal shall be paid as, at least as much as they would have earned as if they were a teacher. Uh, statewide, 80% of the principals and assistant principals are now being paid on the teacher's salary schedule, which means that the principal's salary schedule was below the teacher's salary schedule. Um, and that, that is about the percentage that we have of our principals that are now being paid on the teacher's salary schedule. Um, Dr. Mahaffey told me today that she had heard a report that North Carolina is 50, 50, a 51, um, I suppose it's the state's and District of Columbia in, a school administrator pay. Um, that's, that's sad. Uh, non-certified in central office received a 1.5% increase and a 5%, a half a percent bonus. Uh, this year, there will be a, um, increase in health insurance and retirement in January, which the yearly average will be 16.33% for, um, retirement and $5,600, $5,565 for health insurance. Uh, also, uh, there is a merit bonus pay that we have, we have discussed with you, and Bill will discuss later. We received $73,096, and after benefits, that should give us about $58,000 to distribute, to the people involved in that. This is the budget divided out by the, the seven funds. Of course, the state is the, the largest fund with 63%. Uh, general expense, county, which we think of as our county appropriation at 14%. Uh, the federal budget is 6%. Capital outlay is 4%. Child nutrition, 7%. Child care, 1%. And local fund, 8, is 5%. And these are within a 1%, well, actually, capital outlay decreased by 4%. But these are, the others are within a 1% variance of last year. Okay, the expenses by object code, salaries and benefits account for 81% of the budget. Purchased services, 6%. Supplies and materials, 12%. Capital outlay, 1%. And then any other miscellaneous categories are less than a half a percent. Um, one of the things that, in trying to look at some different aspects of the budget, is an idea of what it takes to operate the school system. So in this particular chart, I removed capital outlay, because that's sort of something that is set aside with a, a different area of the budget. So you took out capital outlay, and that left salaries and benefits at $38,412,398. So we actually operate, as far as buildings, maintenance, buses, all those different things, We actually operate the school system on just a little over $7 million. Everything else is salaries. I wanted to mention a few things about each area of the budget. You can see there that the state fund is just a little over $30 million. State allotments were based this year on $4,992 average daily membership, and this was a reduction from last year with our initial allotment of $5,175. We lost, um, 6.11 teaching positions, two months of school administrator salary, one instructional support position, and 13 months of, of career and technical education. The bright side of this is that we did receive an additional $555,000, almost $555,000 in low wealth funds. We also received a notice last week that we will receive the higher rate of reimbursement in low wealth next year, so that's, that's a very good thing. Okay, highlights of the current expense budget. The local current expense budget totals $66,8926. The budget includes a $400,000 increase from the county commissioners, and we are using $351,658 of fund balance to balance the budget, and that is about half of what we used last year.
Can you repeat that number, please?
Question before we proceed. The additional allocation from the commissioners, didn't that help trigger the low, return of the low wealth money?
Uh, I think what actually triggered that was the increased tax.
Tax rate.
The tax rate, yes. Okay, the federal budget, we don't talk a lot about the federal budget. Uh, this year, the total is $3,142,46. We receive federal money. We receive it through an allotment from the Department of Public Instruction, and it is for specific things. And each director in the particular program area will write a plan for that money, and it has to be approved by DPI before they will release the money to it. Uh, some of the programs, uh, involved in federal money are exceptional children, career and technical education. Uh, there was a, this year, there's a one-time purchase of child nutrition equipment, um, staff development for teachers in Title II, an after-school enrichment program, called the 21st Century Program, and a, a minimal amount for second language learners. The capital outlay budget totals $1,980,505. And, um, the one-to-one initiative, which you heard about tonight, and how much the teachers are enjoying, is paid out of half-set sales tax, which is included in this budget. Then the next two are our, uh, business-type enterprise funds. The Child Nutrition Fund, the total of that budget is $3245,557. And the Before and After School Care Budget, which is $303,383. The final fund is Fund 8, and this fund, um, it kind of catches everything that involves local money that is not either a fine or forfeiture or of an appropriation from the county commissioners. Several of these programs, such as, um, 21st Century, they collect fees, Driver's Ed collects fees. Uh, we see various grants, such as the Head Start Grant, um, the NC Pre-K Grant, uh, we are finishing up our Golden Leaf Grant. There was an NC Quest Grant a couple of years ago. And then any rental of buildings or the auditorium, a school nurse grant, are all in this fund. Are there any questions?
Sufficient funds exist, and the proposed budget operate all our schools.
Yes. It is budgeted this year for all schools to operate.
Any more questions? I know that the Budget Committee met, typically, the Budget Committee meets rather extensively, and I think our last Budget Committee meeting was in excess of three hours. Um, so it's the, obviously, the budget is something the board takes very seriously with the guidance and, um, help and direction from Ms. Mahaffey and, and Dr. Mahaffey. So we want to thank you both for that. If there are no other questions, um, do you have any other presentation?
No.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to have a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I have a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I have a motion, Dr. Mahaffey.
Second.
That is the Budget Committee, Mr. Roman, Vice Chair, and, um, Board Member Marty Pennell represents the Budget Committee along with myself, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the budget as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mahaffey.
Um, as the board may recall, we had a board training, specifically a board training in legal matters, um, and we had some discussion during that training with regard to, um, conditional, uh, the authority of Dr. Mahaffey or, or a superintendent in the system to conditionally hire new personnel. And so what I would like to have, based on that training and that recommendation from our attorney, uh, not our local attorney, but our specialist attorney, Chris Campbell, who specializes in education law, I would like to see if I could get a motion from the board to grant the authority to the superintendent of Alexander County Schools to conditionally hire new personnel prior to the next scheduled full board meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, oh, I'm sorry, any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I don't believe that will be made, that's not a, a policy, that's just going to be a procedural administrative procedure that will take place, uh, moving forward. And next, I'd like to recognize Dr. Bill Griffin for the merit bonus plan for noneducators.
Madam Chair, Dr. Mahaffey, members of the board, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about our merit bonus plan, uh, that you have in your documents. Uh, the 2016 General Assembly, Governor Pat McCory signed into law, uh, House Bill 1030, uh, which is 2016-194, uh, which provides a one-time lump sum compensation bonus, a one-time merit-based bonus, and the opportunity to cash in bonus leave for 2016-17 fiscal year. Uh, the part of that, uh, session law that we'll refer to tonight for the merit bonuses and for our employees, is my recommendation... our employees, it's my recommendation to the board that we award a one-time merit bonus to eligible employees in December 2016 in accordance with the plan outlined here in North Carolina Session Law 216-194, Section 36, 1A. To be consistent with law, the allocation of these one-time bonuses will not be an across-the-board bonus. The amount of the bonus awarded will not be added to an employee's ongoing base salary and will not be considered compensation for retirement purposes. To be eligible for the one-time merit bonus, an employee must meet the following criteria. The position requirements, to be eligible for the one-time merit bonus, they must be classified employees, currently employed in our school system, employed during the 15-16 school year, not allowed to work during the teacher workdays for the 2015-2016 school years. Thus, employees, that that benefit of working during those teacher workdays was taken away from. They shall have no breaks in service, leave of absence transferred from other LEAs, or separation of service from the onset of the 15-16 school year until present. Some of the performance requirements, two eligible employees will receive a point value for not having any disciplinary letters, memos, or action plans placed in their personnel file or that that are documented by the school administrator. Other requirements of the plan, each eligible employee will receive a point value for longevity, attendance, and for being duly employed. Each point will be tallied and used to determine the amount that each employee will be compensated. The superintendent shall ensure that the total amount of the funds awarded do not exceed the amount of funds provided by the state for the purpose of providing merit bonuses. Bonuses shall be allocated as follows. The amount of state funds received for Alexander County Schools will be divided by the number of points earned by the eligible employees, and the earned amount will then be distributed to each employee on a divisional basis. You guys also have in your packet the matrix in which we used to determine those points for our employees. Each of those matrices was given out to our school administrators. The principals took those matrices and developed a system for making sure that they credited points for those eligible employees, and then they averaged them up and have turned them into the HR department and our finance department to determine the number of points eligible for those employees. The stipulation, the main stipulation on this bonus by our governor was that it couldn't be across the board, meaning we just couldn't say everybody gets an equal part, so we had to develop a plan, and I'd like to present that plan to you for recommendation that we move forward with that.
For the public benefit, would you delineate a little bit on those positions by name, not by the person's name, TAs?
They would be those classified employees, yes, that we agreed last year. Yes, sir, that lost those extra workdays or the teacher workday. We felt it very strongly that those employees ultimately lost some days of employment and therefore lost some compensation, and they're very valuable to what we have going on within our school system. So we felt it a proper place to give back some that have lost a little bit, but yet continue such great service for our school system.
So it's basically teacher assistants?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other people besides teacher assistants included?
There are some other employees that that would include within, again, those classified employees.
But the statute clearly said noneducators.
That is correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And you see those position requirements there on eligibility of those employees that it lists, and that is correct.
And the statute did not name school board members either.
No, unfortunately, they did not.
At one point, the folks that will be receiving these bonuses, one-time bonuses, are so well deserving of these bonuses.
Absolutely, 100%. And we wish that there was more. I think I just heard Ms. Mahaffey talk about that after you take out benefits and stuff, it was around $58,000 that will be divided amongst those employees, which by the time you divvy it up, isn't as much as they need. And we would like to give more, but I do commend that there is something there, and we'd like to say thank you to those employees.
And I personally really like that the people who are driving the school buses, in addition to working with children all day, then they drive a school bus, and I know you know exactly how hard it is to keep bus drivers. Those people do yeoman duty.
Absolutely, and we did look at that criterion in trying to award those people that are going the extra mile to make sure that our schools operate successfully. So we certainly applaud those individuals.
In discussion with the budget committee, we talked about the payout being in December for two reasons. It makes for a nice Christmas bonus, but also you heard Ms. Mahaffey talk about benefits will increase for all school system employees in January, and we wanted the lesser amount going toward benefits in December. So that is why we picked the month of December to do those payouts.
I have one question. It's actually a culmination question. I should have asked it when Ms. Mahaffey was up here earlier. We talked about the General Assembly approved pay increases for teacher pay. The question I failed to ask, and not to put you on the spot, maybe Ms. Mahaffey could interject, the cost of health insurance that the employee pays if they carry their children or their spouse, is that a figure that, a percentage that you have?
You know, a specific amount that that may be, and I don't.
I don't have that with me right now, but I can say that even the 730 plan that was free for everybody last year, you have to now sign a special adoration to get that. And a lot of the deductibles and that sort of thing changed. I think that health insurance was very confusing this year.
It was. Well, what Dr. Griffin alluded to, our teacher assistants, most folks in the general public, they're not aware of what a lunchroom worker makes a year or what a TA makes a year, but if they were, there's no way they could raise a family, and I think they rate a family size now 2.3 kids. That would be below the poverty level. And yes, there's some nice benefits, but if you give an average raise of 4.7%, and then the cost of your health care goes up in excess of 4.7%, that's not a raise. And I don't know how else to put it, but I appreciate Dr. Griffin for recognizing the role that our custodians play, our bus drivers, our TAs, because it's hard to fill those positions.
It is.
Bus drivers, or there's a lot of responsibility when you're dealing with somebody else's child, and you're doing it for 22.
Every person in our system is invaluable.
Oh, yes.
And you cannot put a price on what they contribute to the well-being of our children and how to run a school successfully. Hats off to every one of our people, and I don't know that everybody really realizes what it takes, but if they're listening out there on YouTube, we certainly appreciate you.
Good job.
Anything else? I have a motion to approve the merit bonus plan for noneducators as presented. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously as well. Is there anything else from the board at this time? Well, if you want to make a motion from the floor, that's fine. I just wondered if there was any other comments. That's, you can, it's a wide board.
I want to reiterate, we've got Veterans Day coming up this week, and we did have a public comment tonight from the BFW. I want the board to really heavily consider the request on that, and I don't know how the nominee of that goes. I'm sure you'll instruct me on that. You know, they've given a lot, some gave all, and some gave some. We've just got a very small percentage of veterans that's in our community here tonight that are active, and I do know from a personal experience about veterans, and also I do know that they have went out to individual schools and gave flags out, and they did not have flags, and I think this would be a great token of our appreciation of their service and what they continually do in our community.
I think it's something that the board certainly will consider. I will be, I'm remiss in not knowing the rules for donating property and things like that, so I think it's something that we would have to make sure that we were complying with the disposal of property law before we could make a formal motion, but I wouldn't anticipate that this board would do anything other than fully support the veterans if we're able to do that. So, thank you for your comments. They are a very active group, and we're very fortunate to have them. That being said, I would like to entertain a motion from someone to enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A6, to discuss personnel. Thank you. Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to take a few-minute break. Thank you all for staying in duration.